Hey, everybody that's here, everybody that's gonna be here is here. So, Wayne?
I'll turn off with, on your packet you'll see the bidders for the paving and the next meeting I'd like to have them approve Victor paving. They are the lowest bidder. They're a little bit under $100,000, so we can see in the packet. We're very lucky, we had quite a few bidders this time, eight of them, it's kind of a nice large number, so.
Have you ever worked with them before, what do you know about them?
No, I haven't heard too much about them, nothing negative, nothing positive, so I don't know, you know, too much about their company. Anything I did hear today from Mike Obardo, they've used them and they haven't had any problems with them at Unity Township.
If their bids are in line with trust fund area, you've been there, he's familiar, so I mean, their bid prices are...
It's close, I mean, it's pretty close.
Very in line, yeah, yeah. I mean, so your bids are valid, bids.
Mm-hmm.
But...
Okay.
So that would be nice, we could have a number of bids. All right, the next scenario on your packet is a conditional use for a housing plan development by Home with Village Home on Mary Street.
Yeah, I think this is what Ann didn't want to bring up last meeting, because she didn't know where, you know, when we were talking about something else going on back there, something happened back there?
No, no, we did a confirmatory easement.
Yeah, and we asked Ann how she found out about it, and she said, "Ah, let's wait till next month," so.
Well, the planning commission had their meeting right before this, and Chad and his group are here to answer any questions if, you know, it's a council question. I'm about to turn it off there.
Can you just give us a brief, you know...
Synopsis.
Synopsis, thank you. Brief synopsis of what your plans are over there?
Sure. This is Scott Moore, more consulting architects. The project is, are 20 residences, nine of them will be duplexes, and then two single families. We have 10 three bedrooms, six two bedrooms, and four single bedroom units. We would like to do it as a, combining all of the different properties, we're carrying down 13 dilapidated structures, reworking the entire surface of the areas to meet zoning and flood requirements. We do have a challenge at the one area where the stream comes through, is within the 100 year flood, the backwater flood, not the 100, the full height, and so we need to raise that up approximately a foot and a half to two feet. We will have a challenge right where the stream comes through, where the concrete is, because that is actually ages lower than the flood plain, so we'll have to rework that area slightly. We are not infringing onto the sewer water and sanitary easements on both sides of that, there's eight and a half feet on both sides, which we're keeping clear for use, and repairing that wall if necessary. So we're not infringing on that at all. The one question that we do have is because we have some tightness in the area, and again, where the Lloyd Avenue is, we're requesting that we have zero setback from that line, which is also still approximately 10 feet to the side, to the bank on three or four of the properties. Again, we didn't see a problem with that, because there's no way you'd be building, as Legion Keener is the little white房子, and then the Lloyd Avenue is there. We are meeting all of the R3 setbacks for the multifamily. We're creating one and a half parking spaces per unit, per residents, per codes, so we're meeting essentially all of the requirements of zoning, except for we're asking for the conditional use to be able to build to the property line on the Lloyd Avenue side only.
And will that request come in writing? Or are you making it now?
As long as we present, we can certainly do it in writing.
I mean, or is that just for the planning commission to...
What line is it on here?
They have, all their plans right now are preliminary.
So this is where we do...
They have a short state of rules, and that's all. We will send a letter to council, a planning commission will approve these preliminary plans as they meet all the codes and all the setbacks and everything.
So do we need a variance for that?
Well, it seems like, yeah, the, if the property doesn't meet the rear setback line among the Lloyd Avenue street, which appears it doesn't on approximately three of the structures, just look, this is the first time I've looked at this plan.
Now, I know.
But...
Within the R3, it's a 20-foot setback for a rear line, however, I can understand that if there is a property right adjacent to it, but there is none, so that's why we're requesting it.
Right, I'm not saying that a variance wouldn't be issued, I'm just saying it appears that one would be necessary.
I'm just wondering how we, you know, do it procedurally.
Right, if the planning commission were to approve it, it would be conditional approval upon the issue.
Very well, policy.
That's not, everyone's really not low income. It's subsidized, it's not, not low income. They're similar to the units that you see on Lloyd Avenue right now.
I mean, if you got, you guys, you know, people that have been around for a while remember what Lloyd Avenue looked like before, and what Lloyd Avenue looks like now, and if you ever took a trip back to Mary Street, and I have, you know the condition of the houses back there. So this will be a real benefit to the neighborhood and to the community as a whole.
To the city, too, Rose.
To, yes, the whole city, yes. What's...
How long have these homes been here on Lloyd Avenue?
When did you do this, Chad?
Excuse me?
When did you do the...
Like, 2005?
From the 17 years, when we started it.
Oh, 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 then we actually planned and stuff like that, it hasn't been like 17 years.
And they're still beautiful.
Yeah, well, that's because they, that one's gone up, done all the upkeep and everything on it. What's the timeframe?
We're looking at submission to PHFA for funding source, that goes in, we have a preliminary that goes in July 8th, I believe.
Is that the question?
And then September 8th is the formal submission, and we should hear if we have funded or not in March. From there, it will take us approximately four to six months to get all of the drives, the civil engineering put together and approved, start construction probably a month after that, and construction we're estimating will be 14 months.
Flexed with anyone?
You submitted a conditional use application.
Yes.
But you haven't submitted the actual building plans, or is this the building?
Those are the, well, that's the concept site that we'll be sending to PHFA. We do have all the plans organized, but again, they follow...
Right, but you would be filing the plans at a later point in time?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yes.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I haven't been involved in this process, so I don't know where we are with it, hence the questions. I just wanted to make sure that if we had to do the variance at this point in time, that it was, you know, there is the code provisions regarding the variance, but that would be at a later point in time, please submit your site plan.
Actually, with the site plan that we have, again, PHFA, all of our multiple requirements, requires us to verify that the site plan is, the process is approved.
Okay.
Because... And that we even need that by September 8th.
Okay. Chapter 166-68 subsection C, variances, the zoning hearing board shall authorize upon appeal, in specific cases such variance from the terms of the zoning chapter, and it provides the provision, so that's, you know, certainly something that can happen in a short timeframe. That's the part of the code that you look for.
So you could talk with the zoning board, correct, and figure out...
Ann would, Ann would be the point person.
Ann would, okay.
And I, of course, am always happy to help.
Do you have anything to ask her?
No, we met with them earlier, everybody was pleased with what we've seen so far.
Tiffany?
I would like to, I would like to caution is, PHFA task credits are extremely, extremely competitive, and so we have alternative plans, but obviously we hope, we hope to be granted, but just that they might know it's extremely competitive.
Yeah, I understand, well, you know, thank you for doing this, and, I mean, as we can all tell, the organization's been a real asset to the control, and we've done some great, we've done some great things, so thank you for that. Somebody have a question? Okay?
Yes.
Can we move on? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number three is the parking permit on West First Avenue, goes like three car lengths long. We just discussed the agenda meeting, the, did you make a single meeting? So it'll be on the, the next council meeting, for about, it was general, they're hospital cars are parked there.
Thank you.
He's asking for, basically, go park with car. So, the other, so that one has been approved, that was a pre-iteration, we discussed it last agenda meeting. Now, the permanent parking on Tacoma, the actual parking committee had discussed this, and in their May 30th meeting, they did not want to allow permanent parking because of the fact that this was not on the road immediately adjacent to the hospital, it was like a block or so.
Oh, okay.
So they discussed that, and they did not want to allow it. Next item, the discount roof parking, again, I apologize, because I wasn't here, and I didn't give Zach and everybody there enough information, but what I'm looking for, what I wanted to offer to council to do, was give you discount rooftop parking to the downtown businesses of the middle two, only for the time period from April 1st to October 1st, because the rest of the time, that, as winter time approaches, we close that rooftop off. So I didn't give enough information, but that's what I'd like to see offered to, for 25 dollars.
What is it now?
It would be 40.
That's what I thought, okay.
25 a month?
Yeah.
We couldn't tell if it was 25 a month, or a reduction of 25, or what we were...
And I didn't give enough information, I should have said...
You just wanted to get to Florida.
I would.
You were already there mentally.
Yes, that's true, that's true. And lastly, this is an FYI, interviews, we're doing, starting interviews for public work in Florida, we've got, our public work security, obviously Steve presiding, we are looking to replace him, and we've got a number of hotels, a number of, he's with us for five, so I think we have a pretty good, pretty full front, I think.
Yeah, we have some good potential candidates, so we're gonna have them for an interview.
Yeah, we'll probably interview them one, them next week, but we'll get started on that.
And I have an item I'd like added to the agenda, I want, and that would be to vote on approving the request for application for the DCED grant for the lights downtown. Jared was supposed to be here, well, I asked Jared to come tonight, but he couldn't make it, so he will be here on the 10th, but he told me that, sent me some information, and the Catherine Mavis McKenna Foundation is willing to, to, excuse me, contribute, it looks like a good percentage of the matching funds, but not 100% of the matching funds, so, about 80% of the matching funds, so that would leave about $18,000, a little over $18,333 that would make, that the city would contribute towards, towards that project. So, if we get the grant, then we can do, you know, all Main Street and a bigger portion of it, Main Street and around Depot, and down in front of the municipal building, and if we, if we don't get the DCED grant, the contribution by the McKenna Foundation, the Mavis, Catherine Mavis McKenna Foundation, plus the city's contribution would allow us to do from the bridge to then Alexander Street, so to the line main. So, so if, for the city's portion, which would be 18, roughly 18, 19,000, around $19,000, $18,333, plus the contribution from the Catherine Mavis McKenna Foundation, we know we would have the money to do that, and then if we get the DCED grant on top of that, then we can do more. So, we, what we, we have to file the grant by the end of July, and it would be one of those things where, I think it's a pass-through, you know, the city applies, well, LCRP replies, and then LCRP cuts it to the city, but I don't know exactly how all this, how the numbers work, but they're working on the, and that's why I was hoping Christine was gonna be here, because I forgot she was gonna be here, but they're working on the grant application now. So, I'm really excited about it, I, you know, want to thank the Catherine Mavis McKenna Foundation, I think that, I mean, just try to imagine, you know, the whole downtown without the decorative streets, I mean, we've been, we've all been to places where that's been done, and it just adds so much to your downtown. So, that's, I would, I would like that on the agenda, it would be a resolution, you can talk to Jared if you need more information. So I don't know if it's, if it's a resolution that would authorize him to apply for the grant and commit the city to this $18,333, or not to exceed, or something like that, and, and I think we could probably budget it over two budget years, because I don't think this thing's gonna happen till 2019.
Well, you don't really, we could...
I mean, you know what I mean.
Yeah, we could certainly, we could probably budget it in the second year, but we could certainly work it in, it's just, no point budgeting in a year, you're not just gonna spend...
Well, you can...
I'll work it out.
Save somewhere, you know, so it's not like...
We could put in for capital, you know, for, yeah.
So, any question? Did you have, are you folks here for any reason, did you wanna...
Yes, we, we have a reason to be here.
Well, we're always welcome people to come, I just didn't know, we're just here to see what's going on.
We live on Urban Avenue, Your Honor, and we're a little, kind of rift, that they're putting, they're taking our playground away from us, and putting a noise polluter across the street from us, and the only reason I can see is because it's for money, because they're also installing a sporting goods shop on the corner there, and none of the, none of the people that I know that live there want it there, and yet nobody came around and asked our opinion, and we didn't even find out the so-called school was sold until we came to one of the meetings.
Well, that was all over the paper, so, I mean, you know.
And another thing I was talking to Mike.
Wait a minute, what do you mean the school was sold? You mean the property was sold?
The old school was sold.
LES.
Oh, I didn't know that.
It was sold?
That's what we were told.
That's what we were told at the council meeting.
No, we didn't know, LE, to my knowledge LES has not been sold yet, they're building a new LES.
Well, we were lied to.
Yeah, we were lied to, we were told it was sold.
Well, maybe, well, by who?
Not from here.
Yeah, right here in this council.
No.
We, we sold the athletic field to build the new, they, they're building the new school.
Because I asked why you're building the new school, when you could have remodeled the old one.
Well, it's not our...
And they said the school is no longer in our, we don't own it anymore.
First of all, the city doesn't, the city doesn't own the school, the school district does, so those decisions are made by the school board, not this council. The Little Grady Old Trope School Board makes those decisions, so the decision that we made, the, the Little Grady Old Trope School Board said that they were not gonna spend the money to remodel LES, because it was too costly, that it made more sense, and this is them talking, build a new school.
There's another detour.
So, so...
We were told wrong.
Well, not by us.
It was a council meeting.
It was, sir, we never said that, because we wouldn't say that. You maybe went to a school board meeting, but it wasn't here. I mean, because I, we would know about that, because that's the school board's decision.
You weren't here.
I wasn't here?
No.
No, you weren't here in the first meeting we came to.
Are you sure you wasn't a park and rec, you were, you were talking?
Yeah.
There was a park and rec meeting that I wasn't at.
No, that's what I'm saying, you weren't here.
And the park, well, we talked about the deck hockey and stuff that night.
That was the park and rec meeting.
Okay, that's a park and rec.
Yeah, that's, it was here, I was not here.
No, you weren't.
It was the first park and rec meeting, and, and they don't have anything to do with the school either, the only, the only relationship they have with the school, because I do sit on that board, is that the property that the deck hockey's going on is owned by the school district, but it's leased to Park and Rec. So, that's also a park and rec decision.
Okay.
Because they're a separate entity from the city, just like the school board, the school district is, so...
Okay, we're past that. I was wondering if we could possibly get any, any of our streets repaved, like the two main streets in our town are Ligonier and Lincoln, and yet they're, it's like Ho Chi Minh Trail going down, Ligonier Street.
No, you know, we did talk before the meeting, and...
And, you know...
That is one of the...
I mean, now, I was telling Mike, I says, "Look at that beautiful road around St. Vincent College, how they got, they got the outlay there, but we can't even get our city streets marginally fixed."
Well, that's one of the things we voted on tonight.
I'll tell you two things I got.
Okay, thank you.
Some of yours.
Thank you.
We don't have the money Unity Township has.
Or St. Vincent's College.
Yeah, I think that was probably done by St. Vincent College, not so much Unity Township.
Probably did, Bating Road.
Yeah. No, we're talking about the circle.
Bating Road's a county road, yeah.
Okay, um, thank you.
Either way.
Mike, you want to update us on the falling down house, and anything else?
Yeah, the, the house I just was aware of today, it's behind 2408 Ligonier Streets, it's adjacent to Lake Trope still. Went there with Ann today, the house shifted off its foundation, so we deemed it unsafe, and also we barricaded a section of the alley, so that way it limits any vehicle or pedestrian traffic from accessing the rear of that. Now, Ann's in the process of notifying the owner of the property, which is the house that faces Ligonier Streets, letting them know that, you know, the house is, you know, deemed unsafe, it's, is it considered condemned at this point?
Yeah, the engineer's condemned.
Okay, and, you know, once Ann proceeds with that, then we'll figure out, you know, demolishing it as soon as possible.
Yeah, they got five days.
Nobody lives in there, it's, it's vacant, but it's owned by the people whose house faces Ligonier Street.
Yes, correct.
And he said there was no utilities going, so that was the biggest concern.
I don't, you know, even with, when Ann and I were there looking at the property, even when the engineer was looking at it, if it does shift, it's really gonna shift in towards itself, so it's, and it's also protected by, you know, trees and whatnot, so, you know, debris would be a minimum if it did, you know, collapse.
Did it shift, was the recent shift a result of the weather, or?
No, no.
Just a, who noticed it?
I'm not sure how it came about, or who noticed it, how the initial, you know, the word came out. I, to be honest with you, I thought it was a garage, you know, back then, I definitely knew that was a...
It was a house.
I never, never knew that, so, you know, it's, it's a pretty small structure, it's almost like your single car garage with a, you know, with a house on top, you know, with one bedroom room, so, yeah, I'm not sure exactly how Ann was notified of the condition of it, I'll give a cheat on it all.
Ann, just a reminder, since, you know, we're coming up on the 4th of July, I'm gonna remind everyone again, that's next Tuesday, a week from Tuesday, and we do have an alternate route for the parade, it will not be going down Main Street, Main Street will be left open, it'll go down Weldon and out to James, so...
Yeah, we're, we're gonna have plenty of detour signage up. I also consulted with Pendon, who's got a hold of Sidus Construction, they're gonna give me three message boards to put up at different locations, just to help people get out of town, up through Second Avenue, Garfield, Unity, if you get back on 981. Also, a couple message boards on, two of them on Ligonier Street, one for everyone leaving the fireworks, to help, help direct them to 982 to 30, to get out that way, and also one coming in on Ligonier Street to help people take Chestnut Street for the Legion Keener parking for the fireworks. So, we're also gonna put up, you know, additional barricades, detour signs, pretty much everywhere throughout the town, help people, you know, get out of here safely.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I want to encourage everyone to, to come down, you know, we'll get you out, and it'll be, it'll be a great day, so. Anybody else have anything?
The house being renovated, the apartment's being renovated down by Hotel Oil, they have equipment on the street there, is that gonna be a long while while it's on there, is that permitted?
Yeah, it's permitted.
Yeah, because it's directing traffic up.
Yeah, I haven't had any complaints I can ask, I don't know, that's, that's the first time I've heard of equipment on the street. Do they have license, license plates on them?
I don't, it's...
They have a dumpster or something.
Like JAG stuff, yeah, lifts, it's been there for a decent amount of time.
Yeah, it's the first time I've heard of them having, you know, big issues as far as...
Yeah, there's cones around it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's after it becomes two-way, so to go around it, you gotta come in, don't come in traffic.
Okay, we'll talk to them.
I think if it's a, you know, if it's a short-term temporary thing, it's not as big of a deal.
It's been a while.
I know.
It's been two weeks.
Yeah, I know, but I'm, I mean, it's been two weeks already, if it's gonna extend much longer, we're gonna have to figure something else out.
Yeah, yeah, if he's gonna park it, he needs to park it somewhere else.
But if they have a license, they're allowed to...
Well, so there's, there's no, it depends on, is there parking along that section?
No, there is no parking along that side.
So, if there's no parking, you really can't, I mean, he can park while he's using it, but when he's done with it, he should get off the street.
I'm really excited to see what that's gonna look like, and it's not, that is a big, that's, that's...
He's talking about a coffee shop in Little East Grove, or something, he's talking about that a lot, like that.
Yeah, so again, I want us to be careful and polite, and, you know, I don't want to discourage people that want to open businesses in downtown, we just gotta find a way to make it work.
No, he has understanding of the way though, to be...
Yeah, because that's, that's a heavily traveled road, I mean, it's a big road.
Well, and like, in the morning, it's not an issue, but I bet in the afternoon, whenever you have people leaving and you have a lineup going out that way...
Because of the bridge.
Yeah.
It's even worse, yeah.
That's what I'm thinking, so I could, I haven't noticed it, but I'll pay more attention, you know, I may like it out far enough.
You gotta go the other way, the traffic.
You know where Latance is, you know, you know where Latance is, Baker used to be, we're, that's right there.
Oh, no, I know where you're at, I just, I just, maybe I'm, I have the television on, you know, you have a...
Well, that's hot in the morning, like, that doesn't really affect you, you know?
Yeah.
But I would think around the block.
All right, I think, yeah.
Whatever happened to, are they still doing the, on Main?
Theater.
Yeah. The theater? Yeah, they're working on it, they're still trying to, I talked to a couple people, they're still trying to raise the money to put the sprinklers in there.
Exactly.
Yeah, because they, they, they're pretty insistent on having to use the downstairs as dressing rooms, and once they get, once they, once they get off the main floor, then they need sprinklers, that's a code, it's not the city, it's the fire code, so, but they're still, you know, they're still trying to get there, the last I heard, so.
I have the floor.
Me, too.
Yeah.
And I'm sure you've all seen how nice the product building looks.
Yeah.
Really fix the windows yet?
No, I know, not yet, they're coming, they're coming.
Really fixing the inside of that.
I don't know how much more people know the inside, should, but I'm not sure how much, he's got, I guess that's the value of the building, and if, if he does a little renovation on the inside, he can sell that for a nice, you know, a nice, sort of change, which I think is his ultimate goal.
I don't know, but I can't, you know, when they put the primer on, I thought that was, even if they stopped there, it, it's better, I mean, it's just really, really nice.
The work they did, they were, they were very intricate, I mean, they got, they did a lot of handwork, which is unusual, but they couldn't spray it, because they were afraid that it would just not work at all, but they did a lot of handwork, and they did a very, very nice job. The company has done a phenomenal job on that building. It'd be nice if they...
It'd be nice if they did the Mazer House.
Well, I think there's, there's some things, you know, there's some things being started on the Mazer House, but it's going to be.
Yeah, that was a group that did it.
Well, I, yeah, I don't know, but, but I think that's going to be a longer process because it's going to cost a lot more money.
A lot bigger.
And it's a lot bigger, and they're going to have to do chunks of it at a time, but, you know, I just think, you know, if you look at all the things that, you know, we probably ought to go back and put together, have the revitalization group put together kind of like a whole bunch of before and afters of so many of the buildings that they did because, that they had done, because you don't realize, like, even the Dollar General Store, I don't know if you remember what that looked like before, the Trauma Building, of course, Rose's style wasn't bad, but what she did made it look really nice, you know, the Chef Marks for Allen, now that, that one.
Are they getting much business?
Yeah, I think so. Chef Marks, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think they're doing pretty well. And then, are they doing some little grilling out in the park things?
They were talking to Jim about that, but I'm not sure how far that progressed.
I thought they did one, but I'm not sure. I haven't talked to them since, since then.
Problem is, even on the, if they do go out on the front street, they have to be somebody feet from a flammable, you know, material, and the front of it would be wood.
Yeah, but I'm talking about in the.
They were talking about doing the, in the park.
Yeah, in the little park, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if they have it or not.
And then I don't know if you take, well, obviously, you might have driven by it, not that is, but.
Yeah, it's here.
The little park that they're putting in at the Latanzio business, building.
I'll slow down about this.
Yeah, the Adelphi kids are doing it. It's coming along nice.
Yeah, I heard it's supposed to be very nice. I mean, the, the drawings look nice.
It's really cool, because they're doing the design, they did the design work, and I think they're even, I think they even have a green house, so that they're growing a lot of the flowers and stuff, and then they're actually doing the, with help, of course, but doing some of the construction and stuff. So I think it's going to be really, really a nice little spot there where, for, you know, as small as it is, there wasn't much else to be done with it, so. Anything else for the agenda for the 10th? One thing I didn't want to tell everybody, if you remember when we were talking about the fire pits and Jim said he had 16 complaints, do you remember that? Ann called me the other day and said, that wasn't 16 complaints. That was, Ann was giving you a list at that time of how many people had applied for permits. So it was just a miscommu, am I right about that way? It was a miscommunication between Jim and Ann, so I guess I just wanted to clear that up, that at that point, we didn't have 16 complaints, because we were, I was very concerned about that. Are you hearing anything?
I haven't heard anything. I mean, they've gotten, they're starting to, you know, get more and more coming in, so.
A guy walked by and through my alley last night as I had mine going, and he said, well, isn't it nice if we can have little fires now?
Is it?
Yeah, permit?
Yeah.
Yeah, he does.
You want to see proof of permits? All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go to the order, then have everyone have a wonderful, happy, and safe 4th of July.
And a brief executive session.
Oh, definitely, yeah, we have to have a brief executive session to talk about litigation.
Yes, we do.
Which is, is an ugly word, Zach.
Legal matters, I'm concerned, unless they're in charge.
Unless they're in charge, right?